Not on the agenda tonight. So, Von Sullivan, will you condone to give us invocation and then it's going to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Sean Reed.
Almighty and gracious heavenly father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day that we've enjoyed. Father, we thank you so much for this occasion tonight of assembling, to conduct the business of this city. Father, we thank you for this council, these men and women who make it up and their willingness to serve in this capacity. Bless them in their decisions tonight. Father, we ask that peace and discernment be upon them. We thank you so much for all of the dedicated men and women who serve this great city, Father, and we ask that you grant them peace and safety as well. Father, we thank you for this great state and this great nation, the men and women who are guarding and protecting us for freedom and the freedoms we enjoy tonight. We ask that your protection be upon them as well. We thank you so much for Jesus Christ and the sacrifice that you made on our behalf, the blood that was shed, the forgiveness from sin. We ask all these favors in your son's holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to do community announcements. Mr. Lyons?
So, community announcements, starting with August 20th is Family Friday at Joby Barnes Regional Park. This is a free family event with games, live entertainment, story time, food trucks, and the movie Shrek at dusk. So, please bring your families out to that. August 21st is Cruisin' for Coffee at Santa Fe Steakhouse Parking Lot at 8:00 a.m. August 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., is our next youth mountain bicycle race event at the Skip Trail hosted by the Bike Club Oklahoma City and Midwest City. Participants must register at USAcycle.org/juniors. August 26th is an all-industry hiring event hosted by the City of Midwest City and the Chamber of Commerce. This event will be for any businesses in the city that would like to join the job fair. The cost is free to set up a booth and accept applications for open positions if you're a business in Midwest City. September 6th, at 6:30 p.m., is our annual doggy paddle at Reno Swim and Slide. For more information about this event, go to MidwestCityOK.org. And finally, we encourage all residents to use our Residents Request Reporter link on our website under the Your Community tab. This online tool allows residents to report a variety of issues, including code enforcement issues, potholes, and utility problems.
I have one thing before we get started, and this is a reminder, we will have another city council meeting before this actually happens, but the first day of school is coming up very, very quick. And we've gone for almost a year without having kids in school and the school zones and stuff like that on a regular basis. So, I beg you to please, please, please watch the school zones because, you know, it's, police are going to be out enforcing, but the important thing is we don't need any kids getting hurt going back to school. So, please watch your speed in the school zones.
I also wanted to mention that there's a school supply drive being conducted at Neighborhood Services right now. And where's Mr. Stroh?
Right here.
Oh, sorry. Tell when, when's the cutoff, do you know?
I don't know. We are 8:00 to 5:00 for lunch.
So, 8:00 to 5:00 daily, close 12:00 to 1:00 for lunch, the Neighborhood Services Building. You can drop off supplies, I believe it's on the city's webpage, if you're interested in donating school supplies.
When is the line today for that?
I don't know, and Mike said he didn't know.
Will it be going on between, for the next two weeks or what? This week? Good, good, thank you. And then, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Excuse, go ahead.
Espy, you have anything?
Yes, I do. I just want to say in reference to that, to the drive for the supplies, I just want to say how I'm always saying how we all put all of our, all of Midwest City students together and, you know, recognize them as needing all of these supplies and that I noticed that it says for, to the students in Midwest City. And I think that is so awesome because that means all the schools, all of the youth, the students, excuse me, students of Midwest City, and regardless of what school they may attend, because we have several residents that attend different school districts, but they are Midwest City residents and they're students, and we have to all make sure that they all have the same, be able to benefit from all of what we do here in Midwest City. So, I want to say this to Barbara Kelton, is your name Kelton? Thank you very much for this, for the drive that you're doing and how you have coordinated this. So, thank you all in Midwest City. I also want to mention an incident that happened on the 19th of this month, July. I was traveling, headed to Shetty Brook and Windsor Way, and I noticed there was police officers. And I continued and I stopped and I was just observing and I, I noticed that there was a Midwest City officer, and he was giving CPR to this baby, 11-month-old baby. And I just, I stood there and I was just really, I was in tears and I was praying because this officer was working so hard, he would not give up. And the fireman came and he was still working with this child, trying to make sure that he was, was such a sick this child and that he, that he had put all into it. And so, it just, it just showed me, just, just it showed me how the police, they are so community-based and they are working so hard to serve the communities. And the officer name was, his name is J. Fittrow, Sergeant J. Fittrow. And I just want to tell him that I really honor and appreciate everything that he done Because I know that it was very emotional to him also. And so, I just want to recognize him and that we even just give him a hand clap and just say thank you for his service of trying to save a 11-month-old child. So, I have been in touch and want to make sure I was, that how he was doing and I understand that it's emotional to him also. And so, I just want to tell him thank you and I just want to give my hand clap for everyone for the police support. Just want to say job well done. Thank you Sergeant J. Fittrow for all your work.
As an update, Mr. Stroh just provided the school supply drive will continue until August 8th.
Oh, okay.
August 8th.
I will be participating, thank you. I guess anyone can participate, is that correct? Okay, so. Did we give them the address, to where they take it to? The address?
It's at the Neighborhood Services Building on 15th Street. The physical address is 8726 Southeast 15th Street.
Well, thank you, I will be there. I dropped something off, thank you.
No, he's not. I guess he doesn't engage you, he didn't mention on the call picture.
Okay, all right. Okay, is there anybody representing the lake's appreciation or is this just in general?
Paul Streets.
Paul Streets. You're the voice, you should be doing this.
Heard the voice of Midwest City.
Mayor Dukes is, I'm not going to lie, he's on the lake, on one of those floating cabins down in Lake Murray.
How appropriate.
Yeah, so that's why he picked tonight to give it, since he's enjoying the lake. This is an executive order from him, signed by him, so I'm not sure if it's any good or not, but I'm going to give it to him anyway. And it says, "Whereas Oklahoma's landscape is home to more than 2,000 lakes and reservoirs with more miles of shoreline than the Gulf of Mexico and the Atlantic Ocean shorelines combined, and whereas these bodies of water are among Oklahoma's most valuable natural resource, and whereas Oklahoma lakes and reservoirs and their beneficial uses play an important role in Oklahoma's history and growth and financial well-being, and whereas Lake Thunderbird is Midwest City's primary source of drinking water, provides irrigation, energy, recreation, scenic beauty, and habitat for wildlife, and whereas Oklahoma's lakes and reservoirs improve the quality of life for our residents, and it is crucial to protect them for future generations, and whereas the Lake Thunderbird Watershed Alliance was established in 2020 to work collaboratively with residents, communities, and other stakeholders to protect the water quality and quantity of Lake Thunderbird, and whereas the LTWA serves as a clearinghouse for information about Lake Thunderbird, including its uses, recreational activities, water quality improvement projects, and associated research and educational materials, and whereas the LTWA is working in cooperation with a wide variety of partners, including Lake Thunderbird Steak Park, Thunderbird Sailing Club, and the City of Midwest City and other surrounding cities to educate the public about the lake and its watershed. So, therefore, him, Matt Dukes, the mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim July 2021 is Lakes Appreciation Month and the week of July 26th as Love Your Lake Week in Midwest City, Oklahoma. Invite all citizens to join us in this special observation. There is a lot of work going on behind the scenes, I know that for a fact, at Lake Thunderbird. It is, it's a very, very, very valuable resource to us. So, it's very important that we have people like Mr. Streets involved in making sure that the water from Lake Thunderbird is kept up to the quality that we need. So, this is, it doesn't seem like it's a very important deal, Lake Thunderbird, it's in Norman, but trust me, that's where we get our water from, and it's very critical that we maintain the relationship that he, the city attorney, and the city manager has with people that are running that because that's where we get our water from. Thank you, Mr. Streets.
The only thing that Pat left off is that he actually also participates in a committee. There are a few of us, Steve Carano, a customer resident that lives in Midwest City, who's a, who's a professor at Rose State College, and Pat Burns and myself actually work on a committee in conjunction with some of the communities that are part of this to help protect our drinking water. So, Pat, thank you for what you do for our city, and thank you all very much for being here this evening.
Okay, with that, is there anything else from the council before we start? Okay, we're going to move into consent agenda. Mr. Lyons? Do I read it or you? Okay. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the council by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all the council or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Is there anybody in the audience that wants any of these agenda items removed? Anybody from the council? Then I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda passes. We'll move into the next part of our discussion items. Discussion item number one.
Discussion item number one, PC 2082 Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration for Adoption Including Any Possible Amendment of a Resolution for a Special Use Permit to Allow the Use of Administrative and Professional Offices, Retail Sales and Services, General and Medical Services, General and the Hospital District for the property described as part of the Northwest Quarter of Section 9 Township 11 North Range 2 West Located at 1732 South Sooner Road. Mr. Hornless.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Yes, this area of request is located within the Hospitality District that was established with the adoption of the 2010 zoning ordinance and map. The applicant would like to build two buildings on this lot for office, retail, medical uses. These uses are allowed in the Hospitality District with a special use permit. A site plan has been provided and is included with your agenda item. If approved, the construction must meet all requirements of the zoning ordinances for the Hospitality District. Action is to discuss to the council and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to discuss this item?
Is the applicant here?
Can you state your name and address, please?
Kent Mace, 4716 Stonegate Drive, Norman. I'm the civil engineer on this project. Pretty clear what he stated is what we're wanting to do. There's retail space up in front and then a building in back which would be for medical offices. Got any questions? Feel free to ask, I'm here to answer best I can.
Have you read the staff report?
Yes.
And that you agree with what's in the recommendations and everything in it?
Yep, everything.
So, any questions from council?
Make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Motion? Second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes?
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Item number two, Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration for Adoption Including Any Possible Amendment of an Appeal filed by the owner of the property located at 9419 Peach Lane for the Notice and Order to Abate Tall Grass and Weeds. Mr. Stroh?
Yeah, 9419 Peach Tree Lane. Peach, Peach Tree Lane, I'm sorry.
The item is no longer, no actions needed as the address is not in violation to the notice that was given, so it's been taken care of.
Since this is a public hearing, I'm going to speak to a little bit of that in, I, is the owner here? You're welcome to come up too. This is, she's the resident that.
9419 Peach Tree Lane.
Can you take your mask off a little bit so we can?
Haley McGuire from 9419 Peach Tree Lane.
Okay, we met earlier today, and I had been by your house multiple times. If, in fact, if your Ring Doorbell picked up some of the code guys, you probably picked me up several times, and I've been by there multiple times. I have some really significant concerns, and I addressed them with you today. I'm not going to go into them anymore here, told you I wouldn't. And since it's in compliance now, we're kind of left with, it no longer violates municipal code, which is what we're tasked with enforcing. But, but I want to share with you and the residents over there that I have, and I want to be upfront, I've addressed it with the city manager, Mr. Stroh, and the city attorney. And I'm really concerned about how our ordinance is written because it's very, very vague and a lot of times we don't discover things until something like this occurs. And I think you know that there are some people that, that don't like what it looks like, and I was upfront with you on how I felt about it. I don't think it, I just, I'm not sure that's the way to go, but I'm, before, I'm not going to say anything else other than the fact that our ordinance is going to get looked at. Because, like I said, there's a lot of times we don't, we don't, we don't dig down into them till something like this happens. So, I want to sure, I didn't, I want it to be a surprise for you, but we are going to look at what's accepted when you're planting wildflowers, wild flowers, and how much of it, how much of the yard. And I think the code guy was out there today was very, very, I understood exactly what he was saying, and I hope that you did too, because.
Yeah, I thought it was very, very, very comprehensive, it was really helpful. I found the same thing you did that, when I was, you know, you know, talking with code enforcement, trying to figure out, okay, where do we go from here? I found the same thing, that the way the municipal code was written was very vague, and so, where it's vague and interpretation's also vague, I'm like, I don't, I don't know exactly what my avenue here is. What do I do? What can I do? I want to do what is allowed, what is by the rules, and, you know, still be able to decorate my property or, you know, plant my property and everything. I mean, I have a couple more pictures. I have the sunburn to prove that I was out in the yard working and taking care of some more things that were an issue, things like, you know, garden edging to keep things like mulch in and away from other people's property and keep the rocks in and things like that. But yeah, I found the same thing.
The one thing that I would ask you to really, really think about is how this is accepted by your neighbors. And I'm just telling you, just, just keep it in the back of your mind in what further actions could do to alienate them, because I know what you're trying to do, and you don't want the neighbors mad, and you don't want the city over there every day. So, please, before you put any permanent structures in, please, like a fence that blocks access, please think about that.
I, yeah, I understand. I understand, yeah.
Okay. We're going to, this is, this is a, this is a dead issue right now.
Sure. I was just going to say that the mulching and the rock path, that was kind of inspired by the city's own website encouraging rain, rain gardens. I got a couple rain barrels, I read up on that, and the city getting certified with Monarch Watch like I did. That was all, I tried to follow the city's lead there.
And I appreciate that. And you'll see here in just a few minutes that we are trying to update ordinances because the next several items are up, we've, we've seen ordinances need to be fixed. So, this was one that we, we didn't anticipate. So, Mr. Stroh, is it, and I was out there today and with Mr. Bernard, and he's, and you're satisfied that it's in compliance?
Yes.
Okay, and I think from my discussions with the city attorney, we're basically, once it's in compliance, it's out of our hands. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, no action taken?
No actions needed.
Thank you all, thank you so much.
Go to item number three.
Okay, item number three.
Discussion and consideration for adoption, including any amendments of an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 8, Animals and Fowl, Article 1 in General, Section 8-2, Definitions Creating a New Ordinance at Chapter 8, Animals and Fowl, Article 11, Commercial Animal Establishments, Section 8-200 through 8-205, and Providing for Repeler and Severability. Mr. Mice?
Thank you. What this, this request for an ordinance change was brought forth by a member of the city council. It was an issue that, the concern was that we might have some pet shop, pet shops come into the city that would try to sell animals that were bred in certain types of animal breeding establishments, and the health of those animals would be of concern. So, we began looking at this ordinance, and so what we did was, we wrote a provision in there that makes sure that pet shop owners, grooming shops, places like that, can only provide animals that come from an animal rescue as that term is defined within our city ordinance. What else this does though, it requires those animal breeding establishments that are, as defined in the city ordinance, to come in and become permitted by the City of Midwest City. It's a simple application form and they pay a fee. The other thing that they're required to do then is to obtain that license and also obtain their required federal and state licenses. Yes, the federal government has a licensure program and regulates this as well as the state does. And so, then it requires that that animal breeding establishment have those licenses, each one of them, the federal, the state, and the city prominently displayed in, at their facility. That way then, it gives us a chance to know how many of these there are, gives us a chance to have an inventory, and then, other than that, it does not do any kind of regulation at all for the animal breeding, animal breeding establishments. It just requires them to come in and get a permit. That permit is a one-year permit and then is renewable each year. With that, I'll take any questions.
This ordinance went through the ordinance review committee, just for the record.
In, he's trying to blame me for bringing the ordinance, but really, it was some animal activists in Midwest City that came to us that said that, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to single anybody or any company out, but if you watch anything on the news, you'll see that there are some, there are some companies or businesses that take advantage of people when they're selling animals. You go in and you purchase an animal, spend a lot of money for it, either you pay it on credit or you pay on your credit card, or you work a finance deal out, 30 days later the dog dies. Well, you're stuck with that bill. So, this, we have two businesses in, in Midwest City that have adoption programs, and their adoption programs are from rescues. So, this will not affect either one of the two businesses that, that do adoptions because both of them are from adoptions or shelter, Oklahoma City or Midwest City shelter. So, this is basically, not only protects animals, it protects the citizens of Midwest City or people doing business here. So, and we'll be the first city in Oklahoma that does it. If it passes. So, is there, this is a public, this is, no, it's not a public hearing. Does the council have any questions? It went in front of the ordinance review. In, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? All right.
Item three. Item four.
Discussion and consideration for adoption, including any amendments of an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 27, Nuisances, Article 1 in General, Section 27-1, Definitions 27-2, Declared Unlawful Penalties, Section 2714, Collection and Donation Boxes, and Providing for Repeler and Severability. You handling this one as well?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you again. This ordinance change basically does two things. Number one, it changes the definition of an inoperable vehicle, and it expands that definition to include a vehicle that has had a flat tire or flat tires for at least 72 hour, 72 consecutive hours. An action, a ticket was written on this at one time, and one of our municipal judges said our definition was too vague and did not cover this provision. So, we were specific in our definition with this change to make sure it would cover that so that citations can then be written and action taken for those vehicles that are inoperative due to not being able to move due to flat tires. The second thing this does is it works with and changes the definition and who we can take in action against concerning collection boxes. Right now, you'll note that there are several collection boxes out around. Right now, you'll note that there are several collection boxes out around in various parking lots. Currently, our city ordinance only allows us to take action against the property owner of where that collection box is located. Many times, that's a school, or that's a church. And what we're finding is, we're going out and those collection boxes are not being maintained, and there's a lot of, while they are donations, it is not within the collection box. It's being spread out all over the parking lot, and it's becoming unsightly. What this change does, it allows us not only to take action against the landowner, the people who own it, but who also put up the collection box, the company or organization that put up the collection box. It allows us to take the action and write the citation to them as well. Hopefully to spur, not so much to have that citation go through, but hopefully to spur that group to come out, clean up their collection box, and remove any of the unsightly items that may be out there. We're finding that there's a lot of mattresses being just dropped off here, things like that. And we're just looking to make sure that it is cleaned up. It's been kind of difficult, difficult for our staff to just do it against the property owner when it's really the organization that placed the collection box out there that should be responsible. So we're just updating our ordinances to make sure that occurs. Again, this went through the ordinance review committee, and it was recommended by them for adoption. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thirty-eight. After tonight, I think thirty-eight, right there.
I have seen it donated. It's not probably the most hygienic thing to donate. But I have seen people sell and donate mattresses and box springs in the past.
So what is the provision? They, if they do the mattress, so do the owner of someone have to come out at a certain point in time and remove the mattress?
The, the own, the organization that has the collection box is the organization that's responsible now, as well as the property owner, to make sure that that collection box is properly maintained so we don't have a lot of donations just spread out and taking up and looking unsightly around that, whatever parking lot it is, whether it's a school, church, or any other location like that. So it would then spur that, hopefully that organization, agency that has that collection box there and is taking donations to come out and not only clean it up, but then set up, hopefully, a routine schedule for coming out and checking it on a routine basis to make sure that this is not a reoccurring issue.
I was just thinking, you know, that if someone puts a mattress out there, and I don't know, I think I seen one on the block where it says clothing.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it says clothing, it doesn't mean mattress.
While that is correct, we can't always, we don't, we can't always control what people place out there, because it could be, those are open basically twenty-four seven. Anybody could go out there and place anything that they want to at any given time. So whether it happens at two o'clock in the afternoon or two o'clock in the morning, if it gets placed out there...
Is that going to be a timeframe that they have to do, have this removed?
The citation will give them a certain amount of time to be able to then come back out, clean up, and remove, remove the items, yes.
That's, that's a code. That's a code enforcement task, right?
Yeah, that is correct.
It's code enforcement.
So, I mean, they're, they're, they're not going to sit at the box every day and watch it.
Right. No. It's when they become unsightly, and they're not being checked on by the group that puts them out.
Any other questions? If not...
Second.
Okay. Now, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes?
Number...
Five.
Number five. Discussion consideration of passing, approving an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Twenty-eight, offenses miscellaneous, Article One in General, Section Twenty-eight dash eleven, warrant processing fee and providing for repealer and severability. Chief Porter.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Basically, what we're doing and proposing for passage is a hundred dollar fee for the processing of, basically, their violations of state statutes, Oklahoma County warrants, any type of warrant in a county in the state. What we have is due to a lot of the issues down at Oklahoma County in the metro area. Attorneys want to do people through walkthroughs and things like that, or bond somebody out. And they're getting stuck down there, sometimes for up to ten to fourteen hours. And they can come here, and it probably takes them about thirty minutes at the most. But since this has kind of been, we're seeing more of this, and to offset our costs and everything, we'd like to propose a hundred dollars. And what, that'll come directly to us from the bonds person. When we thought about doing this, we talked to the bonding people, and they didn't have any problems with it or anything, so.
So how did you arrive at that? I'm just, I'm just asking, what projected fee expenses do you think that this is going to be added on to what we have? And do you think this hundred dollars will more than cover it?
Well, we didn't want to get too much, or, I mean, and a lot of times, it's our citizens, because sometimes people get in trouble for small things, but it's a county charge. So this is kind of, we thought a win-win. We didn't want to make it too high or too low. Where the bonds people didn't want to do it. Because technically, they can walk in our lobby and say, hey, I've got this warrant, and we can't turn them away. So they could end up doing it anyway for free, but kind of to work with them and stuff like that, that's the fee that we came to, that after speaking with everybody, that we thought was reasonable.
Taking into consideration the time of the jailer to process them, and the equipment that's used, because it's finger pruning mug shots. It's, it takes, it takes that time, the time of the person, and the use of the equipment. I think a hundred dollars is quite fair and very reasonable. And trust me, they're more than willing to pay it.
Yes, sir.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Number six.
Item six, discussion consideration of passing, approving an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Thirty-six, Private Security, Article Three, Security Alarm Systems, Section Thirty-six dash thirty-two, and providing for repealer and severability. Chief Porter, again.
Yes, sir. Basically, we would like to propose to kind of change how we do the residential and commercial alarm fees on false alarms. We've had, in the commercial area, we've had some businesses with like fifty false alarms within six-month period of time, and it was only twenty bucks. So it's just easier to pay that than to try to get the problem fixed. So we looked at the ordinance, and we noticed that the fire department, their fees for false fire alarms, what we did is we cut it in half and basically put the same verbiage in here. Because when the fire department goes out there, you've got a big truck and five or six people going out there. When we go out there, it's usually one or two people. So we figured by cutting it in half, changing it like that would be fair and probably stop some of the false alarms from getting from some of the businesses. That seems where it hurts the most. And it would also help the civilians or the residential people, their alarms go off, because it gets more of a time for them to do that, because the way it was written before, some of these storms we get cause problems, and it's just easier to do it in a longer period of time of tracking it instead of a shorter period.
I think that's critical, and that was brought up in the discussions that we had when we were meeting on the ordinance, is the weather-related ones. We don't want the citizens to have to worry that a couple times that night, the alarm goes off, and they're going to get tagged with a fine. Is that correct, chief?
Yes.
So why are we treating commercial different than residential when it comes to times? Why don't we do in six for commercial and six for residential before this kicks in?
Well, we basically, we did what had the fire department, it seemed to be working for them. That's why we, you know, there's more people, if the commercial, they have more, I'll lose my thought here. But anyway, the commercial, it costs with more people going out there if they continue. We, we don't usually have as much problem with the residential as we do the commercial.
Don, is there an argument that could be made from a commercial guy saying, you're treating us unfairly? You don't treat us the same, that would have any standing?
While they could make... Sorry. While they could make an argument like that, I think we have the evidence that shows that there is enough of a difference, especially with how we have to respond to commercial versus how we have to respond to residential and how many we do. There, there's a significant enough difference, which was brought up during the ordinance review committee, that warrants the treating, the different way that we're treating them between commercial facilities and residential facilities.
Okay. Any other questions? Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Number seven.
Discussion item seven, discussion consideration for adoption, including any possible amendments of an ordinance amending Midwest City Code, Chapter Thirty-seven, Streets and Sidewalks, Article Three, Section Thirty-seven dash sixty-three, Design Standards for Ingress and Egress Facilities, Section, Section Thirty-seven dash seventy-one, Table Four, Providing for Repealer and Severability. Mr. Bundy.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This ordinance would be updating our existing ordinance from nineteen sixty-eight standards to twenty nineteen standards. It would also take the standard from an exhibit form to a tabular form. And it would also add a category for industrial drives, allowing them to be a little bit wider and thicker.
Any questions or comments?
This ordinance is only referring to driveways. Only referring to driveways, so the...
Driveways only?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what is the sidewalk?
That's the section of code that it's in. The, the chapter title.
Just so we're clear on it, the ordinance review committee meets, we're supposed to meet quarterly. We kind of didn't meet for several months, but we got caught up. We've done thirty, this is the thirty-eighth one we've talked about. The sidewalks and the size of them, and that's why I wanted to bring it up now, is because the size of the sidewalks was an issue. And it was brought up by Ms. Eads in our meeting. That's why, and it was, it's going to have to be addressed separately before it's brought back to us. So that's what, that committee kind of acts as a buffer. And we, you know, it was a pretty long meeting that night. There was, that was discussed a lot. And I think staff, with Mr. Lyons and Brandon and his people, and Mr. Sullivan realized that we probably, and the city attorney, we probably needed to step back from the size of the sidewalks. So that's going to be dressed, addressed separately. And that's being worked on. Is that correct, Brandon?
Yes, sir.
But that is not coming to us right now.
No.
So the terminology...
It's just a topic, like the chapter one?
But now that we're saying, you said for private, you mentioned driveways, you said for private only, but it's just saying streets and sidewalks. There is a difference in the private sidewalks and private driveways and streets and such, and then commercial. But when we were talking just now, and instead I'm talking about private driveway.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but this specifically references commercial driveway entrances, correct?
It's, it's just... This says a category for commercial, industrial, and residential drives.
So nothing is changing on the sidewalks right now, correct?
That is correct. There's no sidewalks involved in this particular ordinance.
Because we have had that, that same conversation in eighty-eight, in the article, with them complaining how some of these sidewalks are...
Okay, but the contrast to that point really quickly is the fact that, you know, one of the things we discussed just briefly on the width of the sidewalks was doing five-foot sidewalks, okay? So while that may help in an ADA situation, if you take a neighborhood like what is in a lot of my ward area, and you try to put five-foot sidewalks in there, you're going to take up a third of the front yard, essentially. Not to mention the fact that you, most of the drives are singular drives, and you can't park on the sidewalk, because you can't block the sidewalk in any way. So that's five foot of space out of an already narrow drive, and that's going to create more of a parking problem in those neighborhoods.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, that's, that's being dealt with separately.
So that's, that's why...
Yeah, that's not, that's...
That's not, that's not, we're not dealing with that at all tonight, so we're just...
Right.
Correct.
So you take it from one aspect with the ADA Compliance Committee type of thing. We take it from another aspect with regard to the ordinance review committee, because, again, it's how it impacts the area. And we've talked about creating a specific overlay district, which would allow for different rules and regulations for certain neighborhoods where they don't have those same abilities type of thing.
Okay, and I hate, ladies, ladies, I really hate, I, late, Christine, Christine, I hate to cut you all off, but we're getting outside the scope of what we're doing. So, and you guys are both making extremely valuable in points, and we really need to look at that. But we don't want to get off into that, because that's, it's, we'll be here all night, because there's, there's points to be made. So I'll entertain a motion on just what the ordinance change, it does not include the size of the sidewalks.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Next.
Item number eight, discussion consideration for adoption, including any possible amendment of an ordinance amending Chapter Forty-three, Water Sewers, Sewage Disposal and Stormwater Quality of the Midwest City Code by amending Article Two, Water Rates and Charges, Section Forty-three dash sixty-three A, one through four, water rates inside city and providing for repealer and severability. Mr. Streets.
Thank you, Tim, honorable vice mayor and council. The proposed amendment to Chapter Forty-three deletes artifacts from previous rate changes and adds language needed to adjust the water rates annually based on the Consumer Price Index. Similar language was already added to the solid waste and wastewater sections of the ordinance. This was also an item that was discussed in the ordinance review committee. I would entertain any questions if you have them.
This is the last of our enterprise funds that we need to do this with, or some more? Okay. Tim, can you change, can you explain what enterprise funds are? Why we have to operate them as a business?
Sure.
And what, and why we're, why we are indexing it to the CPI?
So the enterprise funds are operated with the term enterprise as a business, a business enterprise. Those are our, whether it's our GOF, our wastewater department, our water department, sanitation, and our stormwater departments. These departments are all funded completely from the rates. And so that's their revenue source. There's no sales tax going into these departments, and they're required to operate on a positive revenue. And we require a fund balance of a minimum of five percent. We really like a ten percent fund. And the cost of these operations, which are direct costs, are budgeted each year. And we have to maintain a positive revenue over expenses, and we try to be very fair about how we do that. And so our costs go up each year, and that CPI index, which is used throughout the city as we analyze the cost of doing business for our costs and for labor costs that we put into those enterprise funds. And this would allow us to use the CPI index instead of coming back to the council every two or three years for a rate increase.
Back in sixteen, before we started doing this, if I remember correctly, we were a solid six figures upside down in a couple of these enterprise funds. We were having to transfer some money around, and that's one of the reasons that, we're not going to make money on it, but we can't lose money.
No.
And so...
Any other questions?
And we have the CPI, and I thought this was the last one, too. I guess maybe I misunderstood.
Stormwater has not been...
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah. Every, everything but stormwater. Stormwater's a whole nother issue we'll talk about another time, because really, the way, we do stormwater based on just a set fee, where pretty much, we've been told by Department Environmental Quality, really, that's, we're really supposed to be looking at how to impact, what's the word?
They need an equitable rate structure based upon impervious service.
Impervious surface, I couldn't think of that word. Paul's smarter than I am.
No, sir.
Impervious surface.
Yes, sir.
Voice for radio, that's right.
Before, before we vote on this, I think it's important that the council realize the effort that, you know, like I said, the ordinance review committee meets quarterly, but the effort that our staff goes through to get all these ordinances to us, because it's just not cut and paste. It's, there's some research that has to be done, just like the deal on the animal. It took some research to try to figure out what the best way... It took some research to try to figure out what the best way to go, the deal with the wastewater, or the water rates, the CPI, I mean, that's just, you just don't write that stuff up and go on. It takes a considerable amount of work. The sidewalks and the roads, that, that, it's just not written down, and our staff puts a lot of time and effort, and to think, and we've been doing this for about eighteen months, that we've gone through thirty-eight of them, that's, that's a lot.
Thirty-eight ordinances.
And there's, there's more to go.
Absolutely.
And, you know, the one we talked about tonight on the wildflowers is another one
that we need to look at, but, but it's done, it's not done in a vacuum. You know, it's, and when it comes to us, the ordinance review committee, there's been a lot of work put into it. So I, myself, it's myself, the mayor, and Susan that are on it. That's a lot of work that these people are bringing to us before we even see it, so I appreciate your staff and what they're doing.
Appreciate that, Vice Mayor. In this case, Sarah Hancock and her team spent a tremendous amount of work on doing the research and getting the statistics together and working with Paul and-
That's what I was going to say, thanks Sarah and the city-
Sarah and Susan Muldoon there, they did a great job.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention? Motion passes. The only reason I brought it up now is I didn't want to be out of order, didn't want to have to tell myself I was out of order. So the next deal is a public discussion. Is there, and that's where, the citizens, right? You going to read it or you want me to?
No, go ahead.
Okay, just so you all know, when, I'm going to go down the list, and when you come up here, I'm going to ask you to state your name and your address, and just be aware that we can't respond to you. We can direct you to, after we listen, if it's the deal with the water, you're going to go to Paul Streets. If you deal with somebody, you know, something else, we'll, we'll send you to who, but we cannot respond to you tonight, so, because it's not on the agenda, so. And I also ask if, if you're here for the same thing, you know, let's not be too repetitive. So I'm going to call you in order of how you signed up. So Brian Stauffer or Stalford?
Stalford.
Okay, if you'll come up and state your name and spell it, and give me your address, please.
Brian Stalford, S.T.A.L.F.O.R.D., fifty-eight thirteen Southeast Fifth Street. Good evening, my name's Brian Stalford. My family and I have been citizens of Midwest City since two thousand and one. We live at fifty-eight thirteen Southeast Fifth Street between Reno and Southeast fifteenth Street off Sooner Road, known as the Howard Acres Edition. Over the last forty years, this addition has been flooding in certain areas. This past spring, a section of stormwater drainage pipe along my property that runs east and west along Fifth Street collapsed. The area of concern measured nineteen inches deep. If someone was to step in it, they would suffer a lower leg fracture. I covered it up with a rock and contacted the city several times. Public Works did come out and told my wife it was not the city's responsibility to repair and place this section. This section of pipe runs along the length of four properties and flows into a drainage ditch that catches stormwater runoff from Southeast Eighth to Southeast Third Street along city easement. The law states the easement holder, the city of Midwest City, has the duty to maintain and repair. Over the last, over the past twenty years, my house has suffered increasing flooding due to stormwater runoff from adjacent properties to our west. If the stormwater pipe is not repaired or placed, the flooding will continue to increase along my house and property. My neighbors on Southeast Seventh, Southeast Fifth, Delia Street, and Southeast Third have suffered for years with continuing major flooding and property damage. I believe, and so do my neighbors, that storm runoff flooding is due to the city's lack of proper inner, inner infrastructure and oversight for years. This issue was told by several of my neighbors began and to worsen when former Midwest City Planning Commissioner, council member, and Mayor Marvin Elman built a house in nineteen seventy-five on what is now fifty-eight, fifty-seven forty-one Southeast Eighth Street. Some of my neighbors have smelled raw sewage on their property. This past Friday, July twenty-third, I met with Patrick Menefee, Public Works Engineer, along with Steve Bray. In our meeting, I submitted photos and a petition of ninety-seven individuals in our neighborhood and a map that shows the full scope of this problem. We, the citizens of this addition and the neighboring additions, want the city to address this issue and ask the infrastructure be fixed, upgraded, along with having the city look into using capital improvement funds for this expenditure. This fund is collected each month in our utility bills, each household at a rate of a dollar thirty-five and seven dollars for commercial accounts. Expenditures from this account must be approved by you, the council. If the city continues to overlook this, like they have for years, we will look into legal actions if necessary. Thank you for your time.
That's the gentleman that's right back there?
I don't-
Okay, you know him?
Yes.
Okay. I would, I would recommend that you get with him, and like I said, we're, we can't do other than, other than what I'm doing right now, tonight. Okay, Linda Glan? Or Lynn, is that L.I.N.A.?
Yes, Lena.
Lena Glan?
Yes.
Can you state your name and address again, please?
My name is Lena Glan. I live at fifty-eight sixteen Southeast Fifth Street. I'm a neighbor of Brian's, I live right across the street.
Pull the microphone down to-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm short.
On TV.
Can, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's you?
Okay, well, good evening, city council members and attendees. Again, my name is Lena Glan, and I live on fifty-eight sixteen Southeast Fifth Street in Howard Acres Edition, along with my husband, our cats, and have resided there for twenty-nine years. Brian Stalford's energy and determination for flood control petitioning has motivated me to speak today. My approach today will come from a financial perspective. I don't know how many households have flood insurance, but we purchased our first one in two thousand and seven because of growing concerns of increased flooding with costs of two hundred and thirty-three dollars for that year. We experienced major flood damage to our house in July of two thousand and ten, which resulted in seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents in paid insurance claims. To date, we have paid flood insurance premiums for fifteen years, so an approximate total of five thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars. This year's premium is four hundred and ninety-three dollars, which has more than doubled since two thousand and seven. In two thousand and sixteen, my husband started building a retaining wall on the south, which is the rear side of the house, and east side of the house, which compromised lots of dirt, stone, and vegetation, which has held up well to keep water away from the back of the house from flooding. A new driveway was installed in July of two thousand and sixteen to prevent water from entering from the street. We have sandbags, which we still have in the driveway, have helped some, but which are lined along the west side, which is still the most vulnerable area. Aside from insurance premiums, we have spent an estimate of eight thousand dollars to protect our home. We've done our part, now it's time for the city to do its part to seriously address our neighborhood flooding, which has caused undue, I'd say emotional, physical, and financial hardship to affected residents of Howard Acres. It has been going on for far too long. Thank you for listening.
Okay, I'm going to make sure I got the addresses right on this. Pam Chandler. Okay, okay, come on down, but in the meantime, who's at fifty-eight oh one Southeast Fifth? I can't read the handwriting. Is there somebody else that put down the address, fifty-eight oh one Southeast Fifth? That's you, okay?
Fifty-eight oh one.
Okay, and then six thousand and five Southeast Third? Okay, you all are here for the same thing, right? Okay. Go ahead, Pam.
I don't have a prepared statement. I just want to echo the same thing everybody is repeating.
Your name and address for her.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pam Chandler, eight oh five Delia Street. I just want to echo the same thing everybody else has been saying. There's nothing to stop this water flow but our house. So we all have concerns with water coming in our house, our garages, we have no curbs, many areas do not have curbs, the culverts have not been maintained, they have grown up and over, so there's nowhere for the water to go, other than, like I said, into our home. So as echoing what the two previous speakers have said, that we would like to have some type of action to help prevent these flooding issues and not have to worry about getting damage in our homes. It's very expensive. We've spent thousands of dollars for a French drain around our home to try and help, but during heavy rains, when the, when the waters come in, there's nowhere else for it to go, and we still have additional sandbags, we do anything to protect our home. So I just, I just want the city to consider some type of action in our area, curbs, culverts, we have no drains in the streets, anything to help out with this issue. It's pretty bad when we get heavy rains, and as the rains continue for several days, it gets really, really bad in our area. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, the guy at eight fifty-eight oh one Southeast Fifth? Sir? The, what's your name, sir?
Mine?
No, the guy in the, what's your, here, sir, what's your name? The one that's at the podium right now.
Austin Stalford.
Okay, can you spell your last name?
Fifty-eight oh one Southeast Fifth Street.
S.T.A.L.F.O.R.D.?
Yeah.
Austin. It's fifty-eight oh one. Southeast Fifth. Okay, go ahead, sir.
My house at fifty-eight oh one Southeast Fifth Street was built in nineteen twenty-two.
We weren't here-
When, when it was just the county. Dirt road, birdies, barages, and tin horns. South of, south of Reno, east of Sooner Road. That's called hired addition, hired addition. Third Street, Third Street, Fifth Street, Seventh Street, Ninth Street, Eleventh Street. Several homes are built, forty-six, forty-seven, fifty, fifty-one, sixty-four, seventy, eighty-four, ninety-two, on Fifth Street. And it just was the beginning of the county years ago, as it's come to state nineteen oh seven, and, and the owner hired, decided, you know, to mark it off, sell acre lots. And, and just dirt road, barages, and tin horn. Midwest City was born March eleventh nineteen forty-three. But Midwest City annexed this area in nineteen seventy, they indexed it. But, but they treat it as the county, not in the city. But they receive taxes and anything just like anything in community in Midwest City. But they treat it in the county, as the county. And the name, sir, is the rainwater drain system runoff. On Fifth Street, half the owners have barages and tin horns, and they're plugged up. Why? Why are they plugged up? The driveway, plugged up. Who maintains? They call easement. Who maintains the easement? To the left, to the right, to the north. Who maintains the easement? Fifteen feet easement, plugged up, tin horns.
Mr. Stalford.
And yet a half-
Sir.
Has the level.
Sir?
Go ahead.
I hate, hate to, hate to cut you off, but-
Huh?
I hate to cut you off, but I'm, I'm going to stop you right there. We, is there anything new, other than what these, other, and I don't want to, I don't want to limit, but if it's the same thing, uh-
No, I'm finished. That's it, sir. I'm finished with my speech.
Okay. Okay. You've got our attention. I promise you. I want to give the other two people, there's two more people-
Yeah, yeah. I'm through.
Okay, and your address is fifty-eight oh one, right?
The rain system.
Okay, the next two people I have are Jerry and Darlene Calvert. Is that six thousand and five Southeast Third? Okay, so she's pointing at you, you're the voice.
Okay.
Is that true?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, that's true.
Can I interject before he speaks? So one of the issues that, um-
Can we, can she talk?
Yeah, we've got to be careful here.
Yeah, but I can ask for assistance.
Okay.
We've historically done that.
Okay.
And I'm asking that, that one of the issues that has consistently come up is the problem with drainage here. I'm asking the city manager to ask staff to go out to meet with each of these people that has spoken tonight, to hear their complaints, document their problems, and then have it brought back as a discussion item after the information has been gathered by city staff, because it needs to be evaluated in that regard.
And I think, one, one question I have, too. I think you mentioned there's a petition, right?
I started a petition.
Have you turned that in yet?
Staff has it.
Yes.
Who has it?
Um-
Okay, Don.
Patrick has it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, Mr. Calvert, go ahead and talk.
Okay, yes. Jerry Calvert, I live at six thousand and five Southeast Third, have for forty-five years, or a little over that. I've added on to my home and approved it. This drainage system that they're talking about, I brought it to your councilman back then, I can't even remember his name, it's been forty-something years ago. He came out and addressed it. And I told him, I said, well, I see little kids over there when it's raining real hard and it's flooding down through there, and right there, just west of my street, y'all have a cement embankment and bridge. It's a small bridge. And I told him, I said, I'd hate to see one of these small children get caught under that road and drowned. I said, maybe that would get y'all's attention. I said, that's a sad way to do it, but it's a possibility. Okay? When I first moved in there, south where your bridge is, there was about a four-foot hole there. I went out today and measured that, and it runs forty-something feet back into this man's lot. It's washed out, that bad. I mean, it's not a little bitty ravine, it's white. And it's done the same thing on the backside of my property. In fact, we've got pictures of, we've got a two thousand dollar vinyl fence in our backyard, and it rained so hard that I have a metal stake that goes down in the ground, that the trash and everything pushed that gate open, left a, a four or five inch trench where that rod was pulled out, and there's about fifteen foot of somebody else's property and junk in my backyard, and it's about this high, waist-high. And we, my wife and I cleaned that out, took a half a day to get that done. And I kept saying, boy, this stinks. And I tell you why it stinks. She got a manhole in between my house and six thousand one, and I'm not kidding you, raw sewage comes up out of that, and I've reported it and reported it. They come out to address it. They do a few things, and they go away. Next time it rains hard, it comes up again. We took pictures of it. I contacted EPA, and the lady at the EPA said, can you mail those pictures to me or send them to me? We did. Right after that happened, man, they come out and they build these big cement dills across the street for drain holes and all this, and it's still happening. We're tired of being overlooked, and this is a situation that needs to be addressed because it's been going on, for my part, forty-five years. Okay, also, those apartments at Willow Creek, y'all sent out a letter asking us what we thought about it. Everybody in my neighborhood voted against it. About two years later, the apartments are built. We didn't approve it. I don't know who approved it. Okay, then you build a drain system on the east side of that apartment, a real nice one. You didn't do that for us, and it goes across Reno, in between a new addition and a YMCA, and you've got a nice cement drain there. And by the way, the railroad tracks behind there, I used to be able, my kids could walk out of our backyard and go to Reno without any problems. You can't even get through there now. I mean, it's like a jungle back there. I, I've contacted the state DOT, they say the railroad is responsible from dead center of the track, fifty feet either side, and they've never done anything, and neither has Midwest City. It looks like a jungle back there. I've got a house just east of me, six thousand one, I've called in so many times it's not even funny to have it mowed. The guy got a demolition request for Midwest- The guy got a demolition request from Midwest City if he didn't get it brought up to date. Well, I'd like for you to come out and look at that and tell me you'd like that addressed being next door to your house. I'm fed up with it. He's come out and barely painted it, he's had the back door boarded, and there's a tree growing into his house. And nobody does anything about it. And I, I asked the people at Midwest City, I said, "Would you like that addressed next door to you when you're trying to make, maintain a nice address?" And that's, that's been going on since 1999, and it's still existing. I don't know what it...
6001.
That's 6001, yes, sir. And that's where the manhole is, where water, I'm not kidding you, water was gushing out that manhole that high. We took pictures of it and sent it to EPA. And I've told your people, they say, "Well, call us and we'll come out." Weekend, anytime, we're, we'll come out there 24 hours a day. I don't want them coming out there 24 hours a day, because they come out there and they run their line down through there, and next to a big rain, it's still coming up. I told them, "I'm not gonna address this like this. I'm gonna contact the EPA every time, if I have to take pictures every time, and send it to them." Now, if y'all are fine, that's your problem. Because I, I brought it to your attention, it's not being addressed. So, hey, that's where we're at right now. As far as I'm concerned, I told Brian, if this flooding doesn't get addressed, this all contributed about a grand, which will reach about $100,000, and file a civil action against the city of Midwest City. Because y'all, this, this, you built a cement pad on this man's property, and I just looked at it, it's fifteen to twenty foot in, on his property. He didn't give you permission to do that. That's to prevent it from getting worse. I talked to the owner's son-in-law. I said, "Did you put that cement pad there?" No, he said the city did. Where do y'all get off doing that on somebody else's property? I'm serious. If I did that, you'd find me. Wouldn't you? Yeah, I wouldn't. There's a guy right down there about tin horn, I was at that tin horn, it's gotta be thirty-six inches or forty inches tall. That's a galvanized steel tin horn, two of them, that's underneath that street. The reason that's got a tin horn there is to keep from washing your street away. The house right below that, he built a cement embankment to prevent it from going into his house. And one of your guys says, "I wonder if he got a permit for that."
Mr. Calvert? Mr. Calvert, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut... Mr. Calvert?
Who gave him the permit to build that house?
Hold up. You've got our attention.
I hope so.
The city manager is already sending some directions to his staff, so, and we can't talk to you a whole lot, but I can assure you that the request that Ms. Eads made is, is gonna happen, okay?
Okay.
Let me reiterate, the reason we can't is state law doesn't allow us to address something that's not on the agenda. It's not that we don't want to. We're hamstrung by a state law that we have to follow. And if we were to address the issue specifically that's not on the agenda, we violate Open Meeting Act. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But what we can, but what we can do is make a request to have it brought back as a discussion item at a future meeting, which is what I did.
Okay, I wanna bring one other thing to your attention. I was down there at the office on 15th, and I asked the gentleman, it works for y'all, I said, "Is it, is sewer line supposed to be exposed?" He says, "No." Okay? This gentleman right here, Jerry Gore, right there where that water's washed out, that, that sewer line is exposed. And the same guy told me it wasn't. I confronted him right there on the property, I said, "You told me that it's not supposed to expose." Well, that's a different situation.
Let, let us, let Tim do his stuff, staff get with you guys, get all the information, and then when it is a discussion item, we can actually know more of what's going on and actually discuss it with you instead of, I mean, it, I hate this portion of it, because it makes it seem like we don't care.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I'm talking about this portion right here. Talking about this portion, I'm just talking about this portion right here, I don't have anything to do with the past part. So, when we get it on discussion, after, after Tim gets his people to get with you guys, then we'll be able to have an honest-to-God discussion.
Well, I hope so, because I'm, I'm wanting to get with these people and, hey, raise enough money to get an attorney and address it. Or bring it to Oklahoma City's attention and show them the pictures of what Midwest City's doing to us. I'm serious.
Okay.
Okay.
Is anybody else that, that, I know there's another person for new business, but is there anybody else that wants to deal with the issues that we've talked about in new business, have anything else to say? What's your name and address?
Colin Alexander, 401 Delia Street.
Okay.
Good evening. I didn't have anything prepared, but I'd like to hit on this. I can be a point of contact, and I'll definitely make sure that I discuss with the gentleman that you pointed out on this, and with the, part of the petition. I am also the landowner that he was talking about, where he said that it washed out about forty, forty-five to fifty feet. I do have the location. My in-laws have owned this home since 1979, which is right over in there in Howard Acres, and they've been able to point out where this issue is. And I would just like to put it out there that you can contact me, and I would be more than willing to go out there to point out where the...
What's your name again?
Colin Alexander. Because C-A-U-L-L-E-N. And that's at 401 Delia Street. There's just a retention wall where he was talking about where that big giant cement causeway is for the water. You can see that there's a lot of means of aggress for the apartments, but when you get past the railroad berm, the Oklahoma or Kansas railroad berm, there are no means of aggress for the water, and that's where the berm is that, that causes it to back up. And my field, right there on Third and Delia, is what catches a lot of this water and causes much more problems for those down the line, up towards 5th and 7th Street.
Okay.
So, that's all I have, thank you.
Give us a chance, or give city manager a chance to direct his staff. We can't tell his staff what to do, but we can request that he have them put together a comprehensive report on what the issues were that were discussed tonight, and then get back to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and we have one more person separate from this issue, and that is Mark Pogue, P-O-G-U-E. Is he still here?
I am.
Okay. Can you state your name and spell it, and then your address, please?
Yeah, my name is Mark, M-A-R-K, my last name is Pogue, P-O-G-U-E, 10021 Oak Park Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I have a situation, this isn't pertaining to any of this, and I've tried to address it with the court and the court clerk's office, tried to figure out how to address it, but I was maliciously prosecuted by Vicky Floyd. And when I went to court to represent myself, Judge Howell berated me, denied me the right to provide evidence to defend myself, threatened me multiple times, even made a veiled threat that if he was there, he would have handled me, or some other man would have. And I tell you, I didn't even do what I'm accused of. I have a prepared statement that's quite lengthy, it's four pages of what's happened. And I'm really perturbed by what's happened to me. And, and somebody in the city needs to know what they've done. And I'm not sure how to address it.
Hold on one second. Okay.
I emailed Mayor Dukes and never got a response.
Okay. I don't know what the mayor's done on this.
Well, I never got a response, it's been a couple of months.
Okay. Person that you need to deal with right now, sitting right there?
Okay.
He's the city attorney, so if you wanna give him the information or set up, give him your name and phone number.
Yeah, I'd like to meet with him sometime when he's prepared. No, it's been a long day, and during the normal hours.
I'm trying to, here's the deal, I'm, I'm outside what I should be doing right now, but I'm gonna save you the, you don't need to be addressing this, this is on TV.
Yeah, that's why I didn't.
It doesn't need to be a public deal, so...
That's why I asked specifically. Because, I mean, it's pretty raw what I have to say, and it's...
Best thing for you to do is to get, give him your name and phone number, and let him set up an meeting. He is the chief city attorney for us, and that's who, he needs...
Well, the very, the very thing that this woman accused me of, she's accused other people of, I've never been in any criminal trouble, I'm 52, I've never been in any trouble. And it doesn't seem like any consideration was given to me. And there was even a video, a video surveillance that would have totally exonerated me, that was denied as evidence.
Okay, if you'll deal...
And somebody in the city needs to know this has happened to me.
If you'll deal with the city attorney right there, and give him your name and number, and let him set up an appointment.
Sure, if you give me a card, I'm happy to arrange a meeting with him.
Executive session, well, during the interim there, you and I will get together, I'll get your statement, I'll get my information, get your information, and then, uh, just get him some information.
All right, awesome. Thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
Yep. Okay, uh... That is the end, okay, the next, we're gonna go executive session afterward.
Well, ambassador.
Okay, is there any new business? Okay, executive session?
Let me go ahead and read those before we recess.
Read it.
Item one is this executive session discussion, consideration for adoption, including any possible amendment of entering into executive session is allowed under 25OS 307B4, discuss pending claims or actions where public body and the advice of its attorney determines that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claims or conduct pending litigation or proceedings in the public interest. And then, let me read the second one, discussion, consideration of one entering into executive session is allowed under 25OS 307B2, discuss negotiations concerning employees and representatives to employee groups, and an open session authorizing the city manager to take action is appropriate based on the discussion in executive session.
Motion to go into recess.
Motion recess.
Recess.
All favor?
Aye.
Before we do anything else, we're gonna take a five-minute break. You've been asked for that, so stretch your legs for a few minutes.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
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 (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible).
Okay, call us back to order in the municipal authority agenda.
I'm on there.
Okay, first order on the business is the consent agenda for the municipal authority. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be moved and heard in regular order. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled?
Motion to approve.
Seeing none, have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Next is public discussion. Is there any public discussion on the municipal authority? Don't see anything? New business? Is there any new business? Okay, municipal authority moved it adjourned. We'll move on to the Memorial Hospital Authority Agenda. Call it to order, and the first item of business is the consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so the trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, we remove and heard in regular order. Does anybody want anything pulled from this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Discussion item number one.
No actions needed.
Okay, public discussion. Seeing none. New business? Seeing none. Adjourn municipal or Memorial Hospital Authority. Move to the Economic Development Commission Agenda. Call the meeting to order. Consent agenda is the first item. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so commissioners by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all commissioners or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, we remove and heard in regular order. Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
This is a second. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. New business, public discussion. Seeing none. Move, meeting to adjourn. The next item, next, call to order the City of Midwest City Special Utility Authority Agenda. Okay, scratch that.
We're going to come back to that.
The law says to change that. Okay, I'm going to call to order the Special Economic Development Authority Agenda. Call the meeting to order the consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent, so agenda, so trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Does anyone want anything pulled? Seeing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Public discussion?
Hang on, we have an, go ahead and-
Okay, seeing none. Move on to the executive session.
Executive session. Item D, discussion, consideration entering executive session is allowed under 25 OS 307C11 to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business remainder to locate within the city, and to an open session authorizing the general manager, administrator, to take action as appropriate based on discussion in the executive session.
Entertain a motion to move into executive session?
How about recess?
Recession?
With recess.
Recession.
Come back to the other one, and then to the other one, and then back to that one.
Right.
Motion to re-
Yeah.
How do you want to do this, sir?
I think we just go into executive session on all of this point.
Didn't we skip the Midwest City Special-
We're going to come back to that one.
After the executive session.
Yeah, we can't do the Utilities Authority till after.
Okay, so-
After executive session.
We need, time out, but we need to make a motion to go back into the agenda, or what? Because we have two separate things.
We never opened it.
No, we haven't ever opened it up, so we're telling the rest of the council to call it in.
Then do we need to recess the other one that we just came out of to go back to the city council?
No, this one, well, we need to recess because we're going into executive session for (inaudible). So it will need to be recessed and then brought back after the executive session.
Will we hear executive on the development board?
Yes.
So we're going to recess and go into all the executive sessions.
Okay, so, okay, we entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to recess. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're in recess. The rest of the night is going to be executive session, correct?
That's correct.
Except, but until that time, we need the room cleared.
Are we going upstairs?
No, I think we're going to stay here, correct?
Yeah.
So, no, we're not in executive session because we just recessed. So we need to go back into an exec, city council.
Okay, I most, I make a motion to-
Motion to come back in the city council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we're back into city council.
Now.
Now, make a motion to go back-
Motion going to executive session.
I see why Matt gets confused.
Yes.
And now you know not to pick on him anymore.
Not, you want now?
We're going, we're going back into city council.
Right.
And once we get back into city council, we're going to go into executive session.
Correct.
I entertain a motion to go back into city council agenda.
Motion made to go back into city council.
Is there a second?
Your second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we are back in city council. Now I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Do we have to clear the room first before we go into executive session?
Motion to go-
After we get all these votes done.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Second. Okay, I have a motion to go into the executive session for the Oklahoma, for the Midwest City Council Agenda Executive Session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, before we do anything else, do we need to make a motion to go into executive session for the other thing, too?
No, we don't.
Okay.
No, two separate committees, so we can't do both.
We've never done that before, but I mean, it's your-
Okay.
It's your-
Okay.
Your ship, that's right.
We are now in executive session.